You to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or request for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in August. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive, meaning agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present their requests. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor and opposition or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding comments. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor and opposition or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we're here tonight's first petition, which is PC 20-22 Zoological Subdistrict of the Metropolitan Zoo.
Good evening. PC 20-22 Zoological Subdistrict of the Metropolitan Zoo is requesting a rezoning from R3 to PS Park and Scenic for 3.72 acres located on the west side of Columbia Bottom Road, north of Laramore Road, and south of Stradman Road. This location is in the Spanish Lake area in North County. And as you can see, the parcels in question for tonight's petition are four different parcels outlined and read on the map for you. For the surrounding land uses, we have the Wild Care Park, which is currently under construction. We have multiple single-family homes. We have Columbia Bottom Conservation Area located to the east of these four parcels in question. And again, here's a larger aerial for you. Again, the four parcels in question are currently single-family homes. They are outlined in red for you. This is Track A looking to the west. This is also from Track A looking north down the road. This is south looking down the road. This is directly east. This is looking west. This is looking to the south. This is Track B looking west. This is Track B looking southwest. This is also Track B looking west. This is Track C looking west. This is Track D looking west. This is Track D to the north. And I would also like for the Commission to note that this zoo is doing construction around all four of these parcels.
Okay, Leslie, I'm going to make you the presenter.
Okay, perfect. And then I'm here on my screen.
Yeah, you should be able to share it now. Here it is.
And Joelle will kick us off.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to share a little bit about the St. Louis Wild Care Park and our desire to rezone those four residential properties. So, next slide. So, what we're trying to accomplish with Wild Care Park are two sides of the same coin. It's making sure that we do important conservation work for endangered species through our Conservation and Animal Science Center, as well as have a great guest experience to connect people with animals and nature. Next slide. So, as you see, Wild Care Park is about 15 miles from the zoo. It is in unincorporated Spanish Lake, not far from Columbia Bottoms and the Confluence. So, what we're striving for with the construction underway with Wild Care Park is a great experience that delights our guests. It works well for the public and for the animals and the people who care for them. And then we will have our Conservation and Animal Science Center that supports species recovery plans and population sustainability. So, much-needed space for endangered animals to breed. So, Wild Care Park, it's the future of zoos. It's very unique in its focus on mostly endangered species. And we're so close to the St. Louis Zoo and the metro area, which makes it a really wonderful opportunity to combine the conservation breeding and the guest experience and share conservation actions that are public can take to support animals and wildlife. Next slide. So, this is our current conceptual design that shows the elements of Wild Care Park. We are going to leverage the existing core area and infrastructure present to draw our guests in. We will have a South Safari Experience where we'll put guests on vehicles and ride them around. A North Safari Experience where we will do the same with a slightly different mix of animals. And then there's a portion of the property that's the Nature Adventure Zone that we will do some stewardship and restoration work in that area and provide hiking trails and walking paths through that area. And particular for this hearing is the area in green, which is our Kent Family Conservation and Animal Science Center. And this portion of the property is where we will focus on breeding those endangered species. We noted on here the stars where those residential properties occur. And our request is to rezone them to Parks and Scenic like the rest of Wild Care Park from their current zoning of residential. And so with that, I'll let Leslie just briefly describe the properties.
So, I will, the next few slides, I'll just run quickly through the property surveys we did for each of the starred items on this map. We'll start at the furthest south, which is 12505 Columbia Bottom Road. This property is roughly an acre in size. Moving slightly north, we have another property, another residential property, 1254 Columbia Bottom Road. This property is .75 acres. Continuing to move along, north along Columbia Bottom Road, we have 12727 Columbia Bottom Road at .97 acres. And then finally, our furthest more property along Columbia Bottom Road is 12731 Columbia Bottom Road, which is one acre in size.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, Commissioners, any questions? Anyone? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll make it rather-
Hey, this is Keith. I had a question.
Go ahead.
When are they gonna have the dinosaurs there?
They're staying at the zoo at least for the rest of this summer.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mel, you want to take it from there?
Sure. So, if there's anyone who has a comment or a question, please click the raise hand button next to your name. If you don't see it, you can send me a message in the chat. I am the generic host. We do have Speaker Tiffany Schick. Tiffany, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, thank you so much. As a friend and neighbor here of the Wild Care Park, I was wondering if there are any illustrations of what those areas may look like moving forward after the rezoning that could be shared?
Okay, we'll ask them to address that.
Thank you.
At this time, I don't see any other hands.
Okay. And with that, petitioner, can you answer her question?
We are working on some renderings that we will be able to share publicly soon.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Any questions? Or we let them go?
I have one, Wayne.
Yes, go ahead.
Just wondering, this is Bill Ballard, just wondering, have any of the neighbors been talked to or inquired about this personally to you guys?
About the properties and the rezoning?
Property and what you're gonna do with it?
I know that some of the neighbors know that we have purchased those properties. And we have shared conceptually with our neighbors what we plan to do with the park.
Okay.
And any neighbors that are a property, that share a property boundary with us, we have reached out if they have any questions, and we have gone to homes to answer them.
Good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, this concludes this hearing, and we'll go on to the next item. Appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too. Next, we'll go to the last item, which is PC 21-22 Robert Diesel Camp.
Good evening. Talking about PC 21-22, petitioner is Robert Diesel Camp. Their request is to move from C2 to the C8 on a 1.18 acre tract. The location is the northwest quadrant of Sheridan Road and Boundary Road. So, you can see from the context map, the point of interest is in South County, right off of Telegraph Road near the Jefferson Barracks area. From this land use map, we can see due east, there's quite a bit of parkland and green space. On the Telegraph Road corridor, it's a mixture of residential and commercial uses. And beyond that frontage, the areas and neighborhoods are dominated mostly by single-family homes. Here's a larger context map of the general area. Here's a picture of the public hearing notice in front of the petitioner's parcel. This is the commercial building behind the petitioner's parcel. So, we're facing north from the back of the building. Now, we're facing into the parcel facing south. This is the back of the building. Now, we're turning to our right and facing west. Now, this is still behind the building, but facing east toward Boundary Road. This is the first image facing west into the property from Boundary Road. Here's another western-facing image. Now, we're facing east down Sheridan Road at the intersection with Boundary. Turning around, this is now facing west towards Telegraph. This is facing north into the property from Sheridan Road. This is facing south across the street. This is the, this is now facing north along the western side of the property. So, now you have a sense of what the eastern side of the parcel looks like. And finally, this is the abutting western land use.
Okay, Clay, I'm making you, I think I'm making your computer the presenter. Let me know if I did the wrong one. You should be able to share your screen now.
Can you see that and hear me?
I don't see it yet. You have to click Share. Oh, no, not yet. You'll have to click Share down by your mute button and then PowerPoint or the PDF after you click Share.
Share?
It's coming up now.
All right. So, can you see it and hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My apologies. I don't know why my computer audio is breaking up, but I'm talking to you through my phone and working the computer on my laptop here. So, this request is to, basically, to use a site that was formerly an AT&amp;T, an AT&amp;T construction operation, to use it as a general contractor. It's at 201 Sheridan Road. It's 1.1 acres. The site is almost all existing. We are proposing some landscaping, but, you know, in general, very little, very little change to the site. This aerial depicts it pretty well. I've got another colored one, but I think this one is about as easy to see as anything. So, that dark area that you see there is the building. There's a office building that's on the right side or east side right along Boundary Road. Then the larger darker, darker area to the north and then the gray area to the south, that is an enclosed, covered parking area that I presume that the AT&amp;T used to park their trucks and that kind of thing in. So, there's existing two entrances off of Sheridan Road. One goes to the parking lot in front of the building along Boundary Road, and then one accesses the space to the rear. This is the site plan that was presented, a little bit larger area. You can see that we're proposing to landscape along Sheridan and along Boundary Roads with landscaping to meet the current landscape requirements. We are asking for C8 because C2 doesn't allow the flexibility of a general contractor's office. This is a, this is a little bit easier to see. So, the area that you see in gray is around the building is all paved today. The dark centerpiece is the building. You can kind of see the delineation between the covered, the covered and enclosed parking versus the building there to the right. There's another storage building, small storage building at the northeast corner that was built there by AT&amp;T, and it still remains today. Now, it's surrounded by C2, I believe, to the north and to the, to the west. It's got the park and the cemetery to the south and, south and east. Typically, here's a couple of pictures. This is the picture from Boundary Road looking towards the building. And this picture here is along Sheridan. You can see that's a masonry wall-type fence that goes almost to the back, as you could see in the picture before. It doesn't quite make it all the way to the end. But this would be a general contractor's office. They have, you know, three to five full-time employees in the building. The rest of the, the rest of the employees either, you know, show up in the morning and take, take a truck out to the job site and then come back in the afternoon. Or a large majority of them show up a couple of times a week to get supplies and, you know, to meet about projects, and they go, but they then go directly from home to work, so to work at the job site. So, it's really a, I understand that it was a public utility before, and this is not a public utility, but the general use of this site is, this is the same as it was when AT&amp;T bought it. I know that Bob was looking for a, for a property that would suit his needs, and this one came available when he bought it. And I, I'm fairly sure that, you know, a lot of that happened during the pandemic. I'll let him discuss some of those other things. But, you know, that's, that's the proposal here. If there's any specific questions I can ask or answer about the site, I'd be happy to do so. I think Bob's here this evening also, and he could talk a little bit more.
Okay, why don't we go and hear Bob, and then we'll come back with questions?
This is Bob Diesel Camp. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, as Clay was saying, for, oh, probably about three or four years there, we were looking for an office in the South County area around the 270 Loop. And I would find a parcel, and I would call up Pat down at zoning and ask Pat, would this work? And, you know, we would discuss the options. And, you know, quite a few of them, she told me flat out, Bob, I'd have a hard time getting this one passed. This property became available December of 19. And I presented it to Pat when she was still there zoning, and she said, that's perfect. She said, this has been used as a construction office since 1975 when it constructed, fall right in, you know, everything should be fine. And at the time, she verbally said, we might not even need to do a zoning change. We purchased the property on that discussion with Pat, and I applied for occupancy, filled out the paperwork exactly as Pat and I went through it, and turned it in, and no one showed up for the inspection due to the pandemic. And I really didn't know. The fire marshal came in, and he said, Bob, I have no trouble with what you're doing here. You've got all your safety devices in place. You're good. He said, you may or may not see county with the pandemic. And we really thought this was kind of just signed off until it came back around. They said, well, no, you're gonna need to take it to zoning. So, we're trying to present it to zoning. And as I said, we just want to maintain the same use the property's had since 1975, and we probably are not even a fourth of the volume of the traffic coming and going from the property. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, questions? What do you, in regards to the vehicle repair facility, what are you talking about there?
That's, and here again, and I apologize, I filled this out as I was instructed to. So, Pat said, AT&amp;T has this listed as a vehicle repair facility. She said, I want you to write the exact same thing down because at the time, she thought she wouldn't even had to take in front of the Board of Directors or whatever and do all this zoning change. She thought it would be a like use, and she could just sign, get us signed off to use it. And that's exactly how AT&amp;T had their paperwork filled out. If you, there's a two-car garage, and at one time, there's remnants of, used to be maybe some car lifts that have been taken out and abandoned. So, we think, making some assumptions, that they would do oil changes and whatnot on their service vans and pickups. And, you know, they had probably 20, 30 pickups on the property inside and outside that, you know, the guys would come in, get their work ticket, go out, do the job, come back and leave the truck there at night. And we just assumed they did their own vehicle maintenance there. But when I said, you know, vehicle repair, that would just be maintenance of our vehicles, like AT&amp;T did.
Yeah, from what I remember, this site, it basically, it was Southwestern Bell, then AT&amp;T, and it was basically, if the trucks were left inside and taken out in the morning and brought back in the evening. So, I guess I assume then they were doing some oil changes and such inside the garage. The other question is, in terms of outside storage, what kind of items are you looking to do?
If we just, the only thing we would keep outside would be behind the screen wall in the fenced area that you can't see from the road. You know, your pictures are very clear of what we're keeping there. And just minimal items. I mean, there might be some, we're not a storied supply yard. If there's 10 or 15 pieces of material that are needed for a job, there's times I'll have them drop ship there and then load them on a truck, you know, a few days later and haul them away. Some long studs, but nothing, we won't have piles of debris out there, put it that way, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Hillsinger, at some point, may I also ask a couple clarifying questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna, to echo Chairman Hillsinger's question, you know, staff, I think we really need to know that what the materials are going to be, so kind of detailing the nature of them. Additionally, what sorts of vehicles are you going to be having parked here at the site? How many and of what type? And additionally, can you describe the nature of your use that's immediately adjacent across the street? And can you, can you discuss a little bit about that site and how this is going to interplay or anything that's been going on across the street as well?
Clay Vance is working on a whole separate proposal for what can happen across the street, and that's gonna be another thing we bring to you. So, across the street was purchased because it was a, basically, an eyesore. And we, I'm sorry, I got things popping up on my computer for some reason. There were some homeless people living in some abandoned houses, and it was a very rundown area, and we're just trying to clean up the neighborhood. And I think if you ask any of our neighbors, they're thankful for what we've done for the neighborhood by getting rid of that. And we are going to present a plan for across the street to you. But tonight, we're here to, you know, address the first needs of this building. And our equipment is pickup trucks, service vans, and I, we own four pickup trucks and two service vans. We don't have a fleet of a million cars coming in here. As I say, we're nowhere near the impact that AT&amp;T Southwestern Bell was on this property.
What about equipment? Any large equipment?
We do have a few tractors, yes.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful for you to fully describe to the Commission the full nature and extent of everything you're going to store and every vehicle that you're going to park.
Okay. Well, we have a couple small skid loader tractors. We have a couple mini excavators that we can actually park inside if we, and I've had them parked inside. We have two dump trucks, and we have four pickup trucks and two service vans. And we're, as I say, we're not trying to store a warehousing operation as a reseller. If we have a special order product come in, and it's, you know, like I say, some long material, I might have it dropped there, and it will sit there for a few days until we put it on a trailer and haul it to a job site. and it's, you know, like I say, some long material, I might have it dropped there and it will sit there for a few days until we put it on a trailer and haul it to a job site.
This is Gary Elliott. Would you have, um, like concrete forms stored or?
No, we don't do any, so, yeah, no, we don't do concrete form work and stuff like that.
Okay. What about piping?
If there's any kind of piping, it'd just be small PVC piping, but that's just a lot of that is things that are picked up all the job sites and sometimes end up in a dumpster and sometimes they're save for convenience reuse items, but it's not pallets of pipes and things lying around.
Okay.
You said you'd, you'd have, uh, skid loaders, mini evacuators, two dump trucks, uh, two service van and, uh, two pickup trucks. What would you use?
Pickup trucks, sir.
That's what I'm saying. Two pickup trucks.
Oh, four. That would be four pickup trucks. I apologize, sir.
Okay. And what would you use to pick up stuff that's larger than those, uh, vehicles?
Well, we, we do have a couple of trailers that we put things on.
Oh, so you would have trailers there too then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How many trailers are you talking about?
Oh, we have, uh, two equipment trailers and two larger equipment trailers and two smaller equipment trailers.
Thank you.
What, what might help, uh, clarify for some of us is what type of construction? Are, are, are you, uh, providing?
We're, so we're a light commercial general contractor. So, um, the general contracting business has changed over the years. We, we don't self-perform. A lot of things that general contractors use to self-perform, like Gary had a great question. Do you have concrete forms? No. Those are specialty contractors that do that. So we're more of a construction management firm. And our, uh, equipment is job cleanup, job maintenance type situation. So we're more of, uh, you know, a little more on the construction management facility side, making sure the job moves quickly and it maintains clean site.
And, and then you have subcontractors that you, you use for a particular project.
Yes, we'll sub out the electric, the plumbing, the HVAC, all the, that, those type trades, the concrete work. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? No, uh, normal business hours, I would think.
Yeah, we, uh, I have on the door six to four. I'm, the guys don't show up till like seven in the morning, but I'm there early. So I take deliveries from six AM to four PM.
Okay. Seeing no one else, uh, Mel, you want to see if anyone would like to speak?
Sure. So if you would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name. If you don't see it, you can message me, the generic host in the chat. Uh, first we have Philip Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hello, Commissioners, Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, participate on this evening Planning Commission meeting. I do have a couple of concerns as well as, uh, a statement from my childhood experience of, uh, lifetime resident and then twenty-five-year active duty military member. I have always honored and been proud of the Jefferson Barracks and the Veterans Administration Cemetery that the main entrance to that cemetery is via Sheridan Road off of Telegraph Road. But my, my first concern is, over the Fourth of July weekend, I was going to the cemetery as now I am retired. I go to visit my veterans interned at the cemetery. And I saw that there was quite a bit of construction equipment with the, the new lot and fencing. And I was quite alarmed because I didn't expect that the VA was parking their construction equipment so close to the entrance where the funeral processions all enter on Sheridan Road and pass by that construction lot. But the fencing looked very similar to the rest of the VA cemetery fencing. Minus there's the barbed wire on that fencing in that construction truck lot. So I was ready to contact the VA and question them. Why are they so good at hiding their grounds and maintenance equipment yet they have on full display for funeral processions and all guests visiting the number one national cemetery in the United States off of Sheridan Road? Why would they park all that construction equipment for everyone to drive by? This isn't, this isn't down on Bayless Road at Ready Mix Concrete Plants. This isn't down at Baumgartner Road or, wait a minute, Coke Road, an industrial zoned area. Why are we entertaining industrial activities where it's a residential? I appreciate you tore down the two shacks. But that's not a place to park dump trucks. And I don't understand the P O L and the other, P O L is petroleum oil and lubricants in my military vocabulary. But you have hazmat materials that will eventually leach or encroach on grave sites there at the VA cemetery. And I take a bit of offense to that. So when I was ready to go to the VA, I looked up and found out you were the owner for this new property. And you are now requesting this evening, not only to change what was Southwestern Bell's service vehicles, they are not a construction activity. You are the construction activity. They were servicing customers there in this, in the region six, St. Louis County area. So don't call them a construction activity. You are the construction activity. They were servicing customers in residential and commercial zones. So make sure you use your tone correctly on that. I would appreciate. You are the construction activity. That is not an appropriate entrance for our landmark cemetery, and I take a bit of offense to it that you're trying to coerce us because you're incrementing this request. You have two residential properties across the street that I have the photographs of your P and H backhoes or your caterpillar backhoes and excavators that require forty-ton lowboys and tractor trailers to transport. This isn't a simple service shop. This isn't a service administrative shop. This is a major construction yard right in front of our entrance to our national cemetery. I don't understand why we're allowing this. So your incremental scope of work for your rezoning, I question the planning commission, why are you entertaining a partial request tonight? When Jacob Tremble just pointed out, there are two residential zoned lots that will be forthcoming for additional rezoning consideration. So that is my objection to this planned activity. And I would appreciate you consider what would be a proper use for this area using the community development plan for District Six. This is commercial zoned areas. Industrial zoned areas is Coke Road and further on out away from the veteran cemetery. Let us honor the national interned veterans and let us give consideration to the public that are visiting, probably the most visited by out-of-state residents is off of this Sheridan Road access to our national cemetery. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, would the petitioner like to answer those comments?
I would if I could.
Yes.
And, oh, and I honor our veterans and, uh, I would never try to do anything that, uh, uh, would be a disgrace to that cemetery. Now, uh, we do not have any hazmat materials stored there. And we don't, that parcel across the street, we haven't made up our mind what to do with that. There's been all kinds of things talked about. I'm not saying that that parcel across the street is going to be a construction storage yard for large equipment or anything like that. That is not, not what here, I'm here to ask for, and I am very respectful of the, uh, the looks of that property as we come into the cemetery. That's, uh, we needed a, some kind of security to keep, for safety, to keep, uh, the homeless and the kids from being around there. And that's why we purposely put up a black fence so it looked nice and did not look like a rusty old, uh, dilapidated property while we figure out what to do with that parcel. We're, you know, trying to, uh, maintain that neighborhood to look nice. And I go out of my way and with respect for, uh, Memorial Day, Fourth of July weekend, and make sure the property's mode cleaned up, picked up. Uh, no, I, I, and I apologize if you took offense to anything that we did. That is not our intention whatsoever to, uh, uh, not make that look respectful for, uh, people visiting the area. As you know, when you come off of Sheridan Road there, um, I would have to say that there are possibly some properties that are far more in question than, uh, what we have going on. So if you have any more questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? Being none, uh, this concludes this hearing and we, we thank you and everyone who participated. And with that, uh, we'll, we have nothing for the good?
No.
Okay. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion for adjournment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, I have a seven zero and we were adjourned till, uh, with your next meeting, Mel?
July twenty-fifth. It should be a four PM meeting since it's just an executive meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a nice evening.